Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting to order today for our April 8, 2025, Board Meeting between the Board of Supervisors and Northumberland County School Board. I want to welcome everybody here today that's made it into the courtroom, everybody that's online today, let's see everybody here. A reason for this meeting today is to have a discussion on allowing the county to take over the school finances. Well, and that's our reason for here. And the reason is out of the concern for the needs of our students, teachers, and families. The Board of Supervisors asked for this meeting tonight to discuss the financial issues of the county, and in particular, of the schools. We will look forward to finally finding solutions that will address the problems that have been identified over the past few years. Brian, you have any comments?
I just feel that as far as the board and the school board, you know, we need to work together to resolve these issues to benefit the kids in the school system, along with teachers, and also the citizens of the county. It is time for these issues to be resolved.
Mr. Williams?
I just know that the decisions we are attempting to make need to benefit everyone, the children of the county, and all of the taxpayers in the county. And that's where my thought process lies tonight.
All right. Mr. Fisher, you have any comments, sir?
Mr. Brian pretty much hit the nail on the head, so to speak. I'm hearing a lot of concern by the citizens in the community as to the problems that have arisen. And what's our main concern, like Mr. Brian said, is the children. Are they getting the best that we can give them in the long run? That's about all I have, sir.
All right. Mr. Long?
Yes. I'm not in favor of taking the work that the school board should be doing. I think we need to find a way to help them and get them on their feet, and they need to take their responsibility of resigning, one or the other, because the people elected you to do their job, and it's your responsibility. And if you don't think you can do it, give it up. Let somebody else do it. But I don't believe in taking over the responsibility that should be yours. I believe in giving you all the help that you need, but not taking over responsibility.
All right. As I mentioned here, we are here today to look at a solution to hopefully come to that would solve the problems that we have and all the issues that we've been having here over the past few years. And, you know, we've got numerous issues and numerous issues. I have a little slideshow that I'd like to show everyone. And Ms. Christopher, I don't mean not to let you open your meeting, but is that all right if we don't let you open right this minute?
That is fine.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. What we're looking at here is a slideshow. We've got that right up there, and I hope everybody can see it. Turn the lights, please, or turn them down. If you can read that up there, I'm going to try to read a lot of it here. According to several audits dating back to 2016, school administration has failed to follow basic but necessary bookkeeping procedures. School administration has failed to follow procedures and timelines to get all available federal and state resources, resulting in lost funding. Since 2018, the school administration has spent more than authorized by the Board of Supervisors. In several years, the school administration spent what was approved by the Board of Supervisors and has not explained where they found money. The county financial records and the schools' financial records do not match. The school administration does not consistently maintain financial personnel or contract records, which raises questions on school safety as well as finances. Next slide, please. School administration could not provide receipts or invoices to support expenses. School administration is not keeping proper personnel records, including no record of background checks. School administration failed to provide the public and the Board of Supervisors with 100% of financial information kept in the school's financial system. School leadership is failing to enforce existing policies and procedures. Bobbed and lied because of the lack of documentation that the forensic auditors could not rule out fraud, waste, or abuse. These issues have created a lack of trust between the school board administration and community. Now, I ask for the next slide again. More recently, the county paid for a forensic audit to look more closely at the school finances. If the school had let the Board of Supervisors know that they had recently done a similar audit in 2022, we could have saved the taxpayers over $160,000. But that was not shared with us. The forensic audit had the same findings, same types of findings that have shown up since 2016. And here we go. Here we got, "The school leadership promised to fix the school playground with grant money, spent the money on something else, and is now asking county residents to fund it." By order of the Virginia Department of Education, over one year ago, the current water -- no, I'm sorry, not education, the DEQ, I'm sorry. "The current water well needs immediate replacement, and the school board has not approved the MOU for design services. Special education funding is at risk because policies and procedures are not being followed, and there are no records for how money is being spent. School board voted in December to extend the superintendent's contract for four more years, even though the current contract is not expired. School board recently authorized a fact-finding investigation to avoid pending litigation." Litigation about what and why has this investigation funded? In February, school administration told the county they could not meet some of their payroll expenses. The school board chair recently said that the school board and the superintendent were advised not to look at school finances. So who is managing the Northumberland County Public School finances then? I'm sure we can all agree that the current situation is not in the best interest of the students, teachers, and families of Northumberland County. And that is, the board's interests here are the students, the teachers, and the family of the county. Next slide, please. All right. And since January, when the forensic audit was presented, new issues about school finances have come to our attention. All right. And as those bullets say that I just read, none of this is in the best interest of the students or teachers in our school system. Some have accused us of creating misinformation. All of the information on these slides is based on county audits and reports, school board meeting minutes, and school board documents. Now, do any of my fellow supervisors have additional comments they would like to add before the school board moves to open their meeting? I will start with Mr. Brian.
Once again, I just, I want both boards to work toward to get these issues resolved. That's why I'm here tonight.
Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Williams and myself are basically new to this board. It's going on our second year. But this problem is nothing new to the Board of Supervisors. Nothing new whatsoever. It's been going on for a number of years, and it's progressively gotten worse, I believe. I look forward to working with everyone on that school board, and the citizens of the county, Mr. Tadlock and all his people, to get this matter resolved in the best way possible and as soon as possible. We're getting ready to get into budget time now, and we're already behind. So I hope and I pray that we can get together and resolve this problem. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Williams?
I'll just say that this problem has gone on longer than I think it should have, and it's time for us to make a change, and that's obviously why we're here tonight. And I'm truly interested to see what the school board members have to say about the shape they're in.
Mr. Long?
Yes. First, I want to add, Mr. Tadlock, so would this information sent to the superintendent? Was this sent to the superintendent? All the questions that Richard read, was this all that's sent to her? Because there's nobody here could address those things but the superintendent. And I think that should have been sent to the superintendent out of all fairness before this was presented to the public. That would have been the right thing to do. Because I doubt if any of these people on the school board can answer a large percentage of these questions. And the school board is not only guilty, we are guilty as a county as far as having an ordinance to hire people, too. I've been addressing that for months. So we need to straighten up for not only the school board, but the county, too. So that's what I have to say.
All right. The information that was presented today is all public information. It's been presented before.
No, it took what I said to the superintendent.
Superintendent has given some of this information before. It's all public information.
Not, not? I didn't ask you that. That's not the question. I said, was this information sent to the superintendent?
This is something that we wanted to state.
For her to respond because it's new to the school board. This stuff is new to the school board. The superintendent should have been where she could send information back on a lot of these questions.
Well, there's no question that's asked yet. There hasn't been a question yet. There have been statements made. We wanted to get this out, how the board feels, how the board members feel. Then we can have discussion on two. And the school board can have discussion. That's why we're here. We want to discuss these issues.
But you still haven't answered the question.
Can I ask a question?
You still haven't answered the question.
Which superintendent were you referring to?
Dr. Walgo, yeah.
Well, I don't think she's in the capacity to answer the questions right now.
Well, at least she should have been, you know.
I don't think that that's the way that works, Mr. Long, that we haven't.
No. The head person, she's the head.
She's not the head. She's not on duty.
She's the head still, because the sister superintendent has no idea of this information.
Well, I'd like to find that out myself.
I know she does. All this stuff is new to her, a lot of. And I'm standing 100% behind her.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting ready to do.
Ms. Christopher, if you don't mind, would you open your meeting? And the reason we did this, we wanted to tell you our concerns first, so we can sit down and discuss these things. We're not trying to pick on anybody tonight. We just want to get this out, and we want some discussion. So if you'll be so kind.
The meeting will now come to order. We do have a quorum at this time. We are in session.
All right. Ms. Christopher, any of your board members would like to speak on what's going on so far on these issues? Please comment. We want to hear. That's the purpose of this meeting today, is for discussion.
Can I ask Ms. Christopher a question?
Yes. Anytime you want.
For clarity, Ms. Christopher, this Walgo is on FMA, correct?
Yes.
Due to the loss of her father.
Correct.
And that's understanding.
And the condition of her mother.
Right. And that's understanding. I just wanted to clarify about, and Ms. Leslie is acting superintendent.
Right. Dr. Leslie is acting her designated until she gets back.
And sorry that she lost her dad.
We're all very sorry about Dr. Walgo's father.
And mother, also.
And the mother's also, yeah. So I'm very sorry about that. All right. Would anyone like to make a comment, please?
I'll start. And my comments are, Denise Muzik, District 3, school board member. My comments are, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Long. We have asked since my tenure on the board that if there is a question that you have, give it to us ahead of time. We'll come back, and we have responded since my tenure of any questions that the Board of Supervisors has asked for over the years of my tenure. And we ask that for previous budgets. I also agree with Mr. Long that we've been elected, I've been elected, to be a part of the school board and have some responsibilities. But if you want to provide help, we will gladly accept. Now, I say that as an individual. I don't speak for the entire board, but they are here. But yes, you can provide assistance, help to do what needs to be done. We have had changes in our finance department, more than we would like, but we've had different people come in and leave for whatever reason they left for. But if we have neglected to answer something, or you need more follow-up, that has been done in the past, unless I, and if it has not been done, then I've not been aware of. So providing more help? Yes. Do we need more help? Yes. Could our department, finance department, be larger, stronger, with more folk? Yes. Do we have the money to do that right now? No. I don't think so. But they'll correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, we don't have people just floating around not doing anything. It's been my experience and what it is that I observe in my role as District 3 representative on the school board. Those are my comments at this point. Please, board members, correct me if I'm wrong.
Whoever wants to do that, yeah, help yourself.
I'm not against this proposal at all. I wholeheartedly agree. The finance department has been struggling for numerous years. That turnover, I mean, it's inevitable, and it's all around. It doesn't make it right, but it is the other school districts, so we're not singling out. But I do, I agree with the proposal, and I did a little bit of homework, and I looked up, because y'all compared it to what's going on over Essex and what they are proposing to do over there. And then I looked up some of the state codes, and it said, "The locality in the school division can enter into a joint services agreement as authorized by Virginia Code 15.21300. However, there must be an agreement with both boards." So I guess my question is, what's the next step as far as like a proposal of how this will take place? If there's, you know, an agreement drawn up, that type of thing, like an outline of everything and how it'll be and how it will affect our employees?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
And I'm just looking at this, and I know we reference what Essex is doing.
Yeah.
What they're doing may not exactly fit here. But what I would propose to do, would like to see that if both boards agreed to do this, just vote on and doing this, but I would like to see an outside source contact Berkeley Group maybe, and that's just one group. They have people that specialize in finances and to help coordinate this. I want an outside source to come in and do this. But I want the board, the Board of Supervisors and the school board to also work together with this individual to come up with a plan on how to implement it, right down to the staff, right down to how the finances are going to be generated and handled. I think that an outside source would make it more fair to the school board, and it'd make it fair also for the county, because it would be someone in the middle to say, okay, that's not going to work. Let's look at doing it this way. That's what I would like to see. That's just me. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I think an outside source, a third party, would be the way to go. And we could do it as both boards together, or you could break it down and build a committee again. I like doing committees, but both boards working together would be wonderful, too.
I think it'd be fair to both boards as a whole.
Right.
All right. Any other board members like to comment?
I think the first call of action.
Mr. Fisher, just let the school board.
Okay.
Let the school board first. I don't mean to touch y'all.
That's all right. I'll get it back.
But let everyone over on that side speak, and I'd like to hear everybody as possible.
One other thing I was going to bring up before Mr. Brian discussed the proposal. I did notice in your slide, you said that the school board promised to use grant money to pay for the new elementary school playground. And I'd like to know what meeting, and if there's minutes showing that the school board said that, and then I'd like to know what grant or the funds allocated for the playground out of.
All right. I don't have that right in front of me right now, but we can get all that later. Let's just have some discussion here.
Well, I know, but that was accusation.
That is something that we can discuss in detail later.
Right. But it was on your slide.
It was on the slide.
So I didn't bring it up out of thin air.
We need to provide the answers to it.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I just don't.
And we will.
Yeah, I just don't want that out there because it's false information. And if you can prove it to me, I'll say I'm wrong. But I know it's false information.
All right. Who's next?
I suspect I am. But I'll be brief. In my three years, I have seen this board struggle. I've seen us go through three or four finance directors, and they've struggled. But I think the intentions have always been to try to find out how to fix things. So personally, I do believe that it's important that we lean on the Board of Supervisors, that we ask for their help, we embrace their help, and anything that they can do to help us make things right for our kids, for the community, I fully embrace personally. And any help we can give, I believe that, I know I will, and I believe my school board friends will also give what we can. But it has been a struggle, and we appreciate your help.
We want to give you help.
I know you do.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks. Ms. Christopher? We said ladies first.
I hear you. Well, we certainly all want to work together and certainly want to do what's best for students in the county. As far as, I know the comment you had on there that I said we're not supposed to touch the math part. As far as, let me go into that individually. I'm not supposed to go into the clerks and journalize some things for her, or check her posting, or do a post-closing trial balance. I'm not supposed to do any of that. They're supposed to give me like results of things. And if they give us the results, and superintendent's not supposed to either, because I heard her say this year she went to the superintendent's convention, whatever, and they told her, "Do not, do not go in and put your hands on the general interest and posting and all that, because that would definitely be a conflict of interest, since you would have to make the final decisions about these people who are doing it everything. So do not do it." Of course, she's trying to listen and do what her people tell her, so she won't be wrong, the lawyers and all, in the superintendent's convention place. So that's reading, we do not go in. I've never been in the, even my interim clerk now, she will tell you, I have never been in and say, "I want to see, I want to see so-and-so. If so, I'll ask for the board to bring it to the board and let us all see something." But as far as getting in and do it, say, doing the general interest for one general, 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 council, council people, anything, I've never done any of that with myself. And I've been told in meetings, you are not supposed to do it.
All right. Dr. Kern, do you make a comment?
So I look at the Board of Supervisors. I bend almost all your meetings. If I can come in person, I come in person, because I believe that we're not separate entities. We should be working together, because we all have the same, we all represent the same interest of the students and the community, and that's the bottom line. I heard about concerns tonight, and I'm glad that concerns are being brought up. But when you have concerns, you have to ask yourself, what's the right questions you're going to ask when you have those concerns? And then the only way that you're going to get to solution sets is by asking those proper right questions. I listened to Mr. Kosch the other day, addressed to the board, very articulately, by the way, Mr. Kosch. And he brought up two real factors that have to be addressed by both boards tonight, I believe. And the first one is trust, and the second one is accountability. We can all sit up here and say that we want the best for our citizens and our students, but we look at the track record that we have, and it's terrible. We're living Groundhog's Day for the last seven, eight years. And every year, it's the same thing. And I'm very glad that we have finally come to this meeting, but at the same time, I'm sad that it has to come to this point. And I have tried since January to get my board to come to the Joint Finance Committee meetings, and they voted against it. And that doesn't show a demonstrated effort of cooperation. Now, I'm hoping, as we move forward tonight, that we're going to have a demonstrated cooperative effort between the two boards. So when I'm asking questions, I only have two questions that I would like all the board members here to answer in their head if we're going to vote on something. The first one is, based on all the information that was provided in the PowerPoint, and I have not seen that before tonight, is moving the budget to the community in the best interest of our students and in the best interest of the county? of our students and in the best interest of the county? It's that simple. And if we all believe that that's the case, then we have to come up with a solution set tonight.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Board of Supervisors, again. I don't know much to say to you.
I just wanted to clear up, as far as the board of supervisors is concerned, weren't we talking about an individual to do the school and the whole county and not just a school?
Yes.
Right.
I don't think that was brought out and I haven't heard that mentioned at all tonight. And that's what I wanted to interject a while ago.
Chip, you got anything?
I don't, other than to say that we've taken a huge step tonight and since I've been on the board, this is the first time that I would say the two boards have sat down together and had a civil conversation. Nobody seems to have gone over the top with hot heads and we've, it's a big first step and it shows that hopefully we can work together going forward, not just on the finances of the school division, but on all of our business.
I don't have a comment. I don't have a comment. I got, I want to make two motions. First one being, in support of the students and teachers of Northumberland County and due to the result of the lack of accountability in the finances in the past several years, that the board of supervisors explores the options for creating the role of the county finance director with the responsibility for all finances in Northumberland County, including Northumberland County Public Schools. If we're going to do this, let's take a step to make it happen.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Can you please repeat the motion a little louder, please?
Yes, ma'am.
And Jimmy, are you addressing both boards to vote?
Right now, I'm addressing my board because I'd rather for Ms. Christopher to handle.
It's two separate boards.
It's two separate boards.
Right, so right now, this is just for this board.
What's the motion now?
He's going to repeat it.
All right. If you don't mind speaking, then it might.
In support of the students and teachers of Northumberland County as a result of the lack of accountability for school finances for the past several years, I move that the board of supervisors explores the options for creating the role of county finance director with the responsibility for all finances of Northumberland County, including the North umberland County Public Schools.
You're okay this time?
I heard it fine, yes.
All right, okay. Just wanted to make sure if I heard it.
That's my motion.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Fisher, all right, I have a motion, second. Is there any other discussion? Not, I want to ask for a roll call vote. Long?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Hainey votes aye.
Now, my second motion is, I'd like for us to instruct the county administrator to reach out for a third-party source to help put this together, help mitigate the problems, the issues with the schools' finances and the county finances. And to work with the school board in doing this, as a partner in doing this, and bring in information back to us and what information we get on this third-party, the school superintendent will also receive this information to give to the board. And once we get this information, I want to meet again, and this is long and I'm rambling on, but I want to make sure we take care of everything, that we meet again to make a decision on a third-party vendor to help take care of this.
All right, so your motion is to authorize, authorize Mr. Tadlock, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Tadlock.
Mr. Tadlock to search for a third-party. However it's going to be, doesn't make any difference. I put it this, Mr. Tadlock?
It's going to depend on the calls.
Okay.
So that's something that we're going to have to research.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, I got a motion, second. Any other discussion? All right, I want to ask for a roll call vote on that also. Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Hainey votes aye.
I think I've said it.
All right, Ms. Christopher, okay?
I'd like to make a suggestion. Since all of this information is new to our board tonight and we weren't prepared with anything that was on the slideshow or given, and we have our monthly meeting Monday, this coming Monday, is that something we can look into as far as discussing as a board at our public monthly meeting Monday, 14th, and then get back with the board secret?
No, I'm not agree with that.
I'd like to move a motion this evening.
I think we need to discuss it individually, each thing, and everybody get their opinion and everybody get some facts and figures to back it up to make sure we're doing the right thing. Nice, do you have an opinion on what we should do?
There's certainly questions around whether or not, what the boundaries are going to be, is what I would want to be sure of prior to making a motion after first or just seeing the information. Am I, you know, for receiving help? Yes. But what are the boundaries? What is it that there, what's going to be provided as help? Already said, we need the help, we want the help, but how are we going to receive help? Do we still maintain our current employees and this person is like a consultant or, you know, what, just what are the boundaries? I don't want to be voting on something in isolation and there not be enough standards set forth.
In my opinion, I think that the board of supervisors just wants to see us agree to get along and to move something forward. I think within the process, we may develop how we go about it, what documents we need to have. But I think tonight, just to make a basic agreement between the two boards is very, very important. We're not promising anything, we're just saying we want to move forward and help our kids. Let's get this moving now, let's not wait any longer. It's my opinion.
Ms. Christopher, may I add some clarification to something? I don't mean to interfere with y'all's discussion, but I'd like to add some clarification. One of the purposes is to have the school board and the board of supervisors and a third-party to come together to help with this is to discuss the boundaries. Right now, we don't know the boundaries. Y'all don't know the boundaries or how this is going to flow. That's why we need to enter into something to have a third-party come in to help set those boundaries and help put it in motion, to come up with a plan. That's why we need to kind of move forward with this now because...
And then if we, one side or the other doesn't agree, what's it there that, so it's not good?
You got a right to, you got a right to not to agree. You got a right not to vote. You're not being, I'm not trying to lock this school board into any decision until we have a game plan. But we can't get a game plan until we got a third-party involved, a neutral party, to help organize this, to help put a plan together. Because we don't know all the directions to go in, the school board don't know all the directions to go in. So I think it's very...
As far as boundaries of both? Do all have boundaries? We have boundaries?
Yes, ma'am.
And go exactly, you know, follow the plan?
So I think that's why it's important to move forward. You're not, you're not voting to be locked into making a decision that you're going to do this right now. We're just trying to make decisions and vote on these motions to get, to lay the legwork.
Sit down and talk.
Sit down and talk and to get an outside source to come in and help us. So that's where we want to go with this.
I think, I'm going to just comment here and then I'm going to make a motion. I think that even if we meet on Monday, we're not going to have the answers that we need based on Mr. Brand's motion that was approved by the board of supervisors. The only way that we're going to have the answers that we want is if we take that step and go along with the board of supervisors and work out the issues as we're going along. And if we're truly collaborative in our efforts, then we will come together in a month or six weeks or however long it takes and we will, both boards will be on the same page. But for us to sit and delay this, I'm totally against that. So I'd like to make a motion that we, as a school board, adopt the two motions that Mr. Brand has brought up. We can do it individually or as a group. And I'd like a roll of the call, call of the rolls, sorry.
Second.
Comments?
I would like to comment. His first, his first motion said a director of finance for both the school and the county. Can you explain that more?
And it may not be a director of finance, but it will be someone that's in charge of all the finances for the county.
Right. Would you call it like what, what did that say it's called? Chief something?
County Finance Director.
Business advisor.
And that's something, that is just a title that is through in there. That's a, that's a decision we all can make on what kind of title this can be.
So you, you want us more or less to make a motion of exploring?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I'm with you. Because like when I was reading up on the code and everything, you know, it said like the specifics of the agreement, the duration, the purpose, all that type of thing. We don't even have those answers.
No, ma'am.
Because it's brand new.
You got it. And we need to sit down and do this.
I just wanted to clarify, yeah.
But, right, to explore, explore hiring this person, but also while we're doing that, we need to reach out to another source that can help us, a neutral source.
Yeah. I just had questions, that's all.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, didn't know.
Questions are good.
How's it up?
I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Any other comments? May I call for the vote? Dr. Karen?
Aye.
Dr.?
Davis. Aye.
Dr. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Maseek?
Aye, thanks for the clarification.
Bill?
Aye.
And Ms. Christopher? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I do look for a lot more meetings I think today.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
We've had a very good meeting and I look for a lot of...
We used to have quarterly meetings, I don't know why they stopped. We used to have full board quarterly meetings.
Right.
I don't plan anymore.
But this is...
Still can.
Yeah.
Still can.
Should have to be more often to get this in place.
It should be, we probably should be meeting at least once a month. We might start meeting every two weeks.
Yeah, I think so, to get this straight.
It may be down to once a week to get this thing straight.
I agree.
We need to get this straight.
Okay, I want to say, look, we need to involve the total county. You know, I don't know if you tell your teachers about these meetings, they need to be here. And we need to find a way to, I believe we have one parent here that's got a kid in school. Is, is he still here? Yeah.
Two.
One parent, one. You know, so it's up to us to get the word out.
Two of them, Mr. Long, sitting side by side.
Who?
Two.
Two. Okay, two. I don't know, I don't know how many out of 13,000 that we have in the county, but my Lord, we can do a whole lot better than this. Parents need to be here. A lot of, I believe you have a kid, some kids that's interested. I mean, we need to get the word out to as many people as possible about these boards because someone can get up and say something that could change us like that, you know? But we need to let people know and involve the total county because I believe everybody paid tax if you don't let me know.
I'm just curious, how many people are online?
I was getting ready to ask it, same question. Sixty.
We have sixty people online listening into this meeting tonight.
That's good, maybe they were in...
Well, they didn't want to come in person, Mr. Long, because you might make them run some laps.
You can't say that.
You might make them run some laps.
Can't say that, don't play father. Don't play father.
You got some people that are keyboard warriors, they just sit online.
But we can get more parents here than we have here.
I appreciate them calling in.
I appreciate you saying that. I appreciate you saying that. We do need them.
We need the parents here. And I don't know if you still have PTA, I believe the last PTA is when I retired.
The elementary school has a PFO.
Yeah, so in 2007. So we got a lot of work to do, all right, together. That's all I have.
All right, do I have any more comments from either board?
I just want to thank the school boards for coming.
I do too. You don't know how much we appreciate y'all coming. We look forward to a lot more meetings.
Right.
I thank the public for coming, the ones that came in person, all sixty of the people that are online. It's very good that people are starting to attend these meetings and we need the attendance from the public. I look forward to having more meetings with you. Let's get this thing worked out so we can get these finances straight and...
Take care of our kids.
Kids are the number one item.
Right.
That's right.
Yep, so if there's no other comments from my board, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, on...
Yes, ma'am.
From Mr. Luttrell was a statement that we were going to discuss the old bank building tonight that's on there.
All right.
Okay.
So that's the second thing we got to discuss, says the old bank building.
I didn't, I just don't have it on here. I just want to say I'm going.
He just sent an email.
Oh, all right.
He set it up originally.
Well, we can amend, we'll have to amend the agenda, which is no problem.
I don't think that was on...
That, that was not...
It was sent to me, I know.
It was sent to you.
That was for the discussion with the county attorney, the school board attorney and that was a smaller group that we had the meeting. Currently, right now, the attorneys are discussing the lease option, going back and forth.
I have it down for April 8th on my calendar.
Yeah, when we had our special meeting last week, that was one of the items sent over, was for us to find a date to discuss the bank building.
Oh, to determine a date to discuss.
Yeah. And this was one of the dates.
We've already done that last week.
But it might have been misunderstood.
Well, seems like we need to set a date. How is the attorney, are they close to it or what?
I just received something from the county attorney today, I've not gotten a chance to review that. So as soon as I get a chance to review that, we can...
Okay. Are we setting a date for our next meeting?
Yeah, let's set a date.
Won't we need to find out when this third-party is going to become available to us before we can set the next date?
We got to find out, yeah.
And who that person is.
Luttrell can just reach out to Dr. West.
He can, he can keep y'all informed, the email's going out. All right, if we don't have anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, school board, do we hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Comments? Vote?
Aye.